Welcome back. We will now resume the committee's public hearings for the inquiry into Victoria Planning Provisions Amendments, VC 257, VC 267 and 274. And welcome Dr Stephen Rowley.
Good afternoon.
Before we get into your evidence, a couple of disclaimers. All evidence taken is protected by parliamentary privilege as provided by the Constitution Act 1975 and provisions of the Legislative Council Standing Orders. Therefore, the information you provide during the hearing is protected by law. You are protected against any action for what you say during this hearing, but if you go elsewhere and repeat the same things, those comments may not be protected by this privilege. Any deliberately false evidence or misleading of the committee may be considered a contempt of Parliament. All evidence is being recorded and you will be provided with a proof version of the transcript following the hearing. Transcripts will ultimately be made public and posted on the committee's website. For the hands and record, can you please state your name and the organisation, any organisations you are appearing on behalf of?
My name is Stephen Rowley and I'm appearing as an individual today.
Thank you, Dr Rowley. Could I invite you to make your submission?
Thank you. And just by way of background, I'm not sure what information the committee has about me, but sometimes billed as an academic, I have had an academic career alongside a practising career. But in the context that we're here today, probably what is more important is I have been a practising planner since the late 90s. So I've written a book about the planning system, I teach planners, I do a lot of planning training, but I worked 15 years in local government doing res code assessments under the res code provisions and I spent longer than that going to the tribunal. I only stopped doing sort of VCAT planning work about 18 months ago, two years, 18 months ago. So a lot of those planning appeals were about res code. So part of the context here is that I'm coming as a practitioner, really familiar with using these controls. I'm very interested in the operational side and as is probably clear from what I've just said, I'm particularly interested in VC 267. That's the thing I'm very concerned about, which is the codification to the res code provisions. I think it's important to understand that the changes to those provisions, and I appreciate my slides might be a little bit squinty up there, but they represent a lot of changes at once. We are changing the standards in res code to deem to comply and I'm happy to speak to why that is such a profound change. We're also making some of the standards more permissive. We're removing the general neighbourhood character objective standard, which has existed even since September 2023, because this process has started, it is fair to say. But even since September 2023, that overall neighbourhood character objective has allowed a general qualitative assessment still of planning application, so it isn't a purely tick the box exercise. So that's a really important change. We're removing a lot of local policies all at once in practice, because once something is fully compliant, those policies can't be considered. Or the other thing that happens is that they get applied to only, you know, tiny parts of a development, the things that stick out of a standard envelope, the things that depart. And a lot of those policies will be fairly nonsensical in that context, because that wasn't how they were designed to be used. So that's a long period of strategic work that will effectively get swept aside. We're removing many of the customisations of local zones that have occurred for local circumstance. We're removing a general clause 65 discretion, which is similar to that neighbourhood character consideration in that it allows a general ability to catch things not specifically addressed by the controls, but it is broader. It means if it suddenly becomes apparent that land is in a floodway, for example, you've got an ability under clause 65 to assess it. So there are questions about, once you deactivate clause 65, whether you'll be able to catch everything you need to. And of course, we're removing review rights. Now, in my view, that has been done from the wrong starting point. There absolutely could be ways to increase codification and use more deemed to comply models within residential assessment, certainly possible. What I think was always a mistake, and this has been coming for a long time, this is something we've seen coming from multiple years away, and I've been arguing against it for all that time, res code was always the wrong starting point to do that. You needed to actually start afresh and start with a new set of controls and design controls that were designed to be used that way. To take a set of controls that were designed to be used as a fully qualitative, character-based assessment and retrofit them into a deemed to comply set of controls is, in my view, an incorrect way of doing it. And the quote, and I appreciate it's super small up there, but the quote that I've pulled, and it's from the original advisory committee report, these are the people who are essentially designing res coders, we have it now. Their comment was, "Neighbourhood character is a clear example of an issue which cannot be reduced to simple rules. It requires qualitative assessment and the exercise of judgment. Similarly, drafting a prescriptive standard to achieve objectives of building articulation to reduce bulk has proved unsuccessful. The focus of assessment of development proposals should always be on outcomes, not the satisfaction of rules for their own sake." And the reason I raise that in the context of saying that res code is the wrong starting point is, that's the view of one group of planners 25 years ago. It's not necessarily the final word on how you should design a residential development provision, but it is the view of the people who had designed the controls that were used as the starting point for this exercise. They did not believe they had designed a set of codified rules that could accurately assess neighbourhood character. They did not believe they'd come up with a prescriptive standard that could appropriately address the bulk and articulation of buildings, and they said so very clearly. And if the work has been done, and I don't believe it has, but if the work has been done to establish a set of rules and test a set of rules to allow the controls to be used in a codified manner, that work should be made available and it should be clear. And I don't think we've done that. The other thing I'd say is, we lack a good starting point. The diagram at the bottom right is the official planning practice note about how to apply residential zones. And I refer to this often when I talk about the problems with residential planning, and there are a lot of problems. I'm certainly not saying we should just be talking about status quo going forward. But what that diagram shows is, if you've got minimal incremental and substantial change areas that we identify, so you know, slow growth, you know, low growth, medium growth, high growth areas. If you look at that diagram, it's saying that if you're in a medium growth area, you can apply five different zones. And if you're in any of these zones, mixed use zone, township zone, particularly those last three, the residential growth zone, general residential zone, enabled residential zone, each of those zones can represent two states of growth. So the clarity that you would expect from the planning settings about outcomes isn't there. And I mention that firstly because it represents, I think, a better path for improving the planning system is undoing some of this muddle. But it also means if you're trying to rely on the zones as the basis for your codified settings and to help say, oh, all right, we'll use these prescriptive standards that'll have different standards in enabled, general, residential growth, you can't rely on that because the zones are so inconsistently applied and don't give you a clear indication alone of the growth settings you expect. That's currently in the local policies that are being removed. So that's why I flagged that. The last thing I say on this slide is just, my view is, we are removing community appeal rights, there absolutely may be cases. Look, I'm a believer in community appeal rights, but I can recognise there are legitimate arguments that maybe they should be less widespread. They are quite widespread in Victoria traditionally. But if we're removing those rights, I would say it is our obligation, and I mean, you know, planners, lawmakers, you know, government, it is our obligation to be able to say to the community, all right, we have taken away your appeal rights, but we've done it on the basis of a set of controls that we've tested really carefully, we're really clear on the outcomes that they produce, and we can say to the community what those outcomes are. And so this probably takes me to the diagrams on the next page. So I prepared the diagrams in the bottom left, and that was because I was concerned we didn't have diagrams that showed what a codified res code outcome looked like. And this is under the new provisions, this is the new 11 metre, 3 metre envelope that they've created. And it may be that there will often be scenarios within that where that envelope is appropriate. And, you know, there are a lot of old sort of six pack flats that have rough that envelope and sometimes they're pretty awful, sometimes they're not the end of the world, they can be okay. But I'm very uncomfortable looking at that envelope and saying basically that any massing with that envelope, if you imagine that being built next to you, any massing within that envelope, you have no recourse to VCAT about the massing of that building. And to me, that's a very aggressive planning setting. And again, I come down to has the testing been done? Have we got enough confidence that we can say to the community, yes, we're comfortable with the outcomes we're getting here? In my view, rather than working backwards from the existing res code provisions, they should have been starting with this kind of exercise. This is how you would use a deemed to comply provision. I personally think you should be using deemed to comply provisions for simpler scales of development than sort of three to five, you know, multi-dwelling, oh, two minutes, okay, than multi-dwelling development. But certainly what you should be doing is codifying things and working from that massing, coming up with provisions that represent a massing you think is acceptable, codifying that, testing that, and that should have been the exercise. I'll make two comments really quickly and you can perhaps ask me about them. The diagram on the right is their own diagram about landscaping and basically the provisions will require only that 10% tree coverage. My reading the provisions and I'll stand by it is that you cannot ask for any more landscaping, no bushes, no flowers, nothing else. That's the way the provision is worded.
A little tiny pocket in the corner.
And that, in my view, is a very low bar. And the other thing, and I'm happy to speak to it in questions perhaps, is in my view, it'll incentivise removal of existing trees. And the last point I just want to make before I wrap up then is about operational complexity. And this is, I think, really poorly understood. The current provisions are discretionary provisions used in assessment. You don't need to go through line by line as someone doing the assessment and say every last little point of a standard is met. And it's extremely common to say, ah, you know, is this the frontage? Is that the frontage? What counts as a side setback in this case? You know, there might be little technical points of assessment that you don't actually have to resolve. Now though, by making them deemed to comply, the provisions become black letter law provisions and a council officer, whoever's doing the assessment, has to be 100% sure as to whether or not it is fully complied with every page of what is an extremely complex set of requirements. They're not more complex than the current requirements, but they're used differently, so the complexity matters a lot more. And in my view, the claims that this is going to speed up assessment, which is obviously the sort of the benefit side of the equation, I've talked about what some of the potential risks are, but the claims that this will lead to efficiencies are massively overstated. And I'm extremely dubious about how workable the provisions will be day to day, because being confident that every last point of these provisions is met, and because people's rights to appeal hinge on this, right? So you can be subject to legal challenge if you get any points in these provisions wrong. And I encourage you to look through them and think about what their exercise looks like as a council officer. It's extremely challenging and in my view, that is going to eat up the efficiency bonuses that people are purporting will come from this. I think I was at time, so perhaps I should stop there.
That's great, thank you. So we'll do the same as last time, we'll go about eight minutes per slot and I'll kick off. Thank you, Dr Rowley, that's really fascinating. Look, I guess the question you've invited, if the deemed to comply approach is wrong, and recognising obviously, I think everyone here agrees that increasing housing is a major priority, what's the right way?
I alluded to the idea of a deemed to comply exercise. So you absolutely could be starting to draw envelopes. You start with essentially a massing diagram like the one that was on my slide, and you say, well, what do we think is a sort of an acceptable typical massing? And you look at whether you can codify that, put some rules around that, and then you say, yeah, all right, let's test this in a few unusual situations, you sort of, you know, you attempt to break the provisions, you have to try and test deemed to comply provisions with essentially the worst case scenario that you can do under the provisions, and you see what they look like. I think there is absolutely a valid exercise that, particularly if you're clear about what you're doing, you made that testing available, which hasn't happened in this case, you put it to the community, people can see what it looks like, there's a genuine process of consultation on that, that is absolutely a path you could go down. I personally believe, I have a diagram in my book which talks about a bit of a bell curve about types of provisions. My view is the sort of codification is best addressed at really sort of the simpler end of the provisions, low risk provisions, because you, once you've codified it, you have to be sure that it's going to be all right in every instance. Now, I personally think that is better for certainly single dwellings. It may even work well, and this is what the testing would start to tell you, it may even work pretty well up to two to three storey dwellings. If you think about classic villa unit type developments, you sort of don't care what they look like at the end of the day, because they've got enough garden around them, over time the garden grows up. But when you get to more intense forms, you have much less of that sort of tolerance built in. So I'm sceptical as to whether deemed to comply is the right approach. The other thing I'd say is, those are the kind of applications that the planning system does add value through. And so in terms of accelerating and efficient, and making the planning system more efficient, I'd be saying, well, you could probably preserve those in the system, and there are all these other things that aren't in the scope of this inquiry that we could get out of the system to help speed the system up. The other thing I'd say is that, if you're up to ask my master thesis, and I'll talk about this in my book, my master thesis is why Victorian planning reform has been so ineffective for 25, 30 years. We've been obsessed with process based reforms. And this is essentially a version of that, because what it's doing is creating a special code assessed stream essentially. You can qualify for a special process if you comply with certain codes. And we have things like, there's the VicSmart process for fast track, where, you know, the legislation review they're looking at is talking about different streams of proposal. My view is that the best room for improvement is improving the way rules are written, the way rules are designed, the way guidance is given in the system, because at the moment in Victorian planning, there isn't enough clarity. And that is one of the genuine critiques of res code, which is valid. But we're probably all aware that, you know, in Victorian planning, there are often height restrictions that say five, five storey discretionary height limit, and you routinely get seven and nine and whatever. So there's a whole lot of scope to improve the planning system in a lot of other ways. There is absolutely scope to improve res code. The thing I'd say specifically about res code too, is that it's absolutely a valid argument that the neighbourhood character element has probably historically been given too much weight. Not council's fault actually, by the way, that is the instruction they're given by the state government in terms of how to do their housing work. Neighbourhood character is currently given a lot of weight, it could be given less. The difficulty is, I think contextual response to design is really important, and I think there's a real danger that the contextual response baby gets thrown out with the neighbourhood character bath water in this exercise. I mean, it's a horrible analogy, but that's the risk. I've talked for a little while, so maybe I should stop. The question of what you do is really complex, you know, I could, I could talk for multiple hours about how to reform the system, but it isn't, it isn't res code codification or we just let nothing happen. There's all sorts of avenues. I don't think our planning system has been well or thoroughly reformed over the past 20, 30 years. And I think a lot of the paradigms that have been used for reform have been mistaken in ways I've spent a lot of time exploring in my book and elsewhere. So there are a lot of avenues you could go down instead of this.
So when you say that you don't anticipate the changes actually accelerating the approval process, why is that? Because on the face of it, it would have seemed to be a far more cut and dry and simple approach.
You're weighing up a procedural benefit against a procedural risk. The procedural benefit is a lot less things will go to VCAT. There is a strong incentive to go down this path for developers, so I think a lot of people will try to make sure that they comply. There is interestingly a whole question about whether in some areas that actually leads to underdevelopment, but that's a whole other thing. So the procedural benefit is a lot less VCAT appeals, and that is a huge cause of delay and a huge cause of uncertainty. The other procedural benefit is just certainty and clarity for developers. So, you know, if they're confident they meet the standards, they've got more clarity about how to proceed. So those are all benefits. The difficulty is, if you have to be, as I was sort of saying, if you have to be 100% certain at every point of that assessment, as someone who did hundreds and hundreds of res code assessments over my career, countless res code assessments, the idea of being able to stand as a planning officer and say to a member of the public and tell them whether or not they have an appeal right or not, and councils will have to do that at one point in the process or another, they have to be clear to the public, you can appeal or you can't appeal. You have to be sure of absolutely every point in those res code documents. So I've just printed them out, so that's what I'm holding up. You have to be sure of compliance with absolutely every point. And if you start looking through them, if you look at the landscape standard, which is the one I had up largest on my slide, yes, it's 10% compliance with, it's 10% of the site covered by tree canopy, but then there's a whole lot of things, oh, is the soil quality great? Is the soil quality, the soil size large enough? Oh, is this one close enough to a building? There are all sorts of questions raised by that diagram about whether you're able to count the canopy outside your site, because it seems you can. And then can your neighbour count that canopy? Are we double counting canopy? You start to get into really legalistic arguments about every point, and you have to check everything really carefully. Don't even ask me how you actually accurately measure an existing tree. Proposed trees are really easy, and this is what I meant about incentivising removal of existing trees. Proposed trees are perfect circles on a plant, so you know how big those are. But existing trees, oh, they've got squiggly little edges. So is the risk that, because it's not then just an argument with council too, it's a neighbour who comes in, and we've already seen this since the September 22, 23 codification changes, it's neighbours coming in and saying, hang on, you calculated this wrong, that tree's a little bit smaller than you thought it was, the building's a little bit closer. I had a colleague tell me that the neighbour came in disputing the setback because there was a bay window, and so they'd measured to the wall, but there was actually a bay window that they should be measuring to.
Strictly wrong.
So when you get these very legalistic interpretations, the councils are then vulnerable to challenge in terms of, you know, whether they've issued a permit incorrectly, and then you get into legal disputes. So the procedural risk against that benefit is that councils have to be much slower, much more careful, much more legalistic in the way they approach the permits than they are now. And that, that's why I'm very sceptical that there'll be the wholesale benefits in processing times that's suggested.
Thank you very much. Mr Davis.
So in effect, what you're saying is the procedural benefit's theoretical, but in practice, possibly illusory.
I am deeply, I'm deeply sceptical as to whether there will be a procedural benefit because I'm concerned about how unworkable the controls in their current form are. I mean, we'll see, you know, it's a gut feel, but, but I look at those controls as someone who had to administer these controls and say, jeez, those are really, really difficult to administer. And that, I just expect it will go on at council.
So if we accept your general sense, and I think there's a lot of obvious truth in it, the problem is then we've put this system in place, which will then have all the negative consequences, and you've pointed to the moonscaping, so the, the loss of canopy, the loss of so forth, for little, if any, benefit?
Well, the benefits that I, yeah, in my view, I'm not certain that you're getting those procedural benefits, that's all right, yeah.
The second, the second point is in relation to heritage protection.
Yes.
And I'm particularly interested in this overlaying of planning schemes on these points, or planning overlays of various types, various layers of control that have got to be assessed. And just let's say for the sake of it, it's in, you know, Glenira or Stonington or somewhere like that, and there's a, there's some sort of local heritage protection. These provisions are going to mean that that is uncertain, how that is going to apply. There's different and potentially a tension layers.
Potentially, I'm less concerned with that in the context, to be frank, of the res code changes. You already have a situation where heritage overlays sit, well, res code basically, you know, is in all residential areas, and if you didn't have a heritage overlay, you can develop a fair bit more intensely than you can with the heritage overlay, so that's a tension we already manage. I think there's probably, I, I haven't come here particularly to talk about the other reforms that are before the committee, there's probably more of an argument that...
I'm about to get to them.
Well, and I, you know, I don't want to go too far down that road, but there is potentially an argument if you have an extremely strongly pro-growth zone overlaid across a heritage overlay that is limiting growth inherently, because it's essentially saying the building should stay, that there's a bit of a tension there that could get resolved by VCAT. I don't see that so much as an issue with the, with the res, with res code per se, because I don't think it, it doesn't push as far, and it's a more familiar kind of tension. Sort of you'd, you'd understand res code kicks in when the, once the building is gone. And the other thing is, you would often be looking at a question of whether then the replacement building, for example, if it's a precinct control, it sits appropriately in a heritage streetscape.
Streetscape, but, but one, one, one building might not impact a streetscape?
Well, I mean, those arguments would...
The next one and the next one and...
Those arguments would definitely get made, yes. And it, I suppose it probably would increase ambitions for those sites. But again, those are arguments we're used to seeing play out in terms of how to put a replacement building in a heritage streetscape. So it's not, not necessarily a fatal concern for me.
And then a, another point that I was keen to pursue with you, so you, you pointed to the, the problems with this system, and I might say I think you've made a very strong case, but what you're effectively saying is you would, if you wanted a greater mode of, you know, a sort of a very predictable code assessed type arrangement, you would go and test that somewhere? You would set up a couple of zones where you'd run that for a couple of years and the bugs would be got out of it and improvements would be made. Is that, that the way you'd go around?
I wasn't specifically talking about testing it in a location, I was thinking, you know, you could do sort of desktop assessment, you could run it against proposal. I mean, there, you can essentially, you know, hire people to do design exercises to say, well, what can they fit on an envelope with this set of controls? So you can do some sort of theoretical testing in that manner. The approach that is actually similar to what you've suggested is, is something I've suggested in the past, which I used to talk about, the idea of a, of giving councils the option of what I called a facilitated form overlay. And what I meant by that was, give them the ability to put in their planning scheme of control, saying, we think buildings of about this size and shape are okay.
In this pocket.
And they, yeah, they would choose to apply it in a particular place. And that would be then, if you gave this ability to councils, that would then give them more proactive ability to say, yeah, all right, these are the designs we're trying to encourage, these are the forms we're trying to encourage.
It's not in the beautiful heritage area, it's in this area there, and we could actually do a bit more there.
They could choose where to apply it, and then the idea is that it would be then, you, you could theoretically use that as a test bed for, oh, this will actually work well in a particular area, maybe we can roll out that, that more widely. So that is a model I've suggested in the past of how you could do something a little bit like what you're suggesting. I've always been told, and perhaps it's right, I remember I, you know, suggested this to people over the years, and people have said to me, oh, I'm not sure there'd be much take up of it, and maybe that would be right, but wouldn't hurt to try. You know, all you need to do is put the tool in the planning scheme and see whether anyone uses it.
I'm conscious I've got two minutes left, but I thank you for that. My, my other point would be, with these zones, and there's 10, 10 big ones and 50 smaller ones, before you roll this out, you'd actually want to have some assessment of capacity of within those schools, open space, a whole range of other public facilities. If you were rolling out a big number of people into an area, would you do that sort of planning?
I'm very reluctant to get into a detailed discussion of those zones, because, you know, that's, that's not the primary concern I've come here today. And I haven't looked as closely at, at those zones and that whole aspect of that programme, but broadly, yes. You know, infrastructure needs are a big part of planning for activity centres, yes.
And just on the tree canopy risks, the moonscaping, I mean, we're now at a point where people talk about climate change, but even separate from climate change, if you remove vast numbers of trees in a, in a particular pocket and put in concrete, brick, you know, tense, dense development, it gets hotter. And do you, do you, do you see an issue with, with the heat island effect?
Well, I was concerned, we've got Plan for Victoria canopy targets of 30%, and I was concerned when I saw these diagrams and I, you know, concerned about the lack of testing of, well, what do we think, does this 10% on private land? And 30% is not directly, not directly comparable number. But yes, I was concerned about whether the 10% standard here and the lack of protection, which I'm happy to talk about, about the way existing trees are treated compared to proposed trees. Yes, I'm concerned we don't understand whether that is consistent with the Plan Victoria 30% objective, for example, which is concerning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Davis.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Dr Rowley, thank you for joining us. You have quite literally written the book on Victoria's planning system, and thank you, it's been a very useful resource to have.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask you about section 38 revocations. You might be aware that there is currently a motion before the Parliament to revoke both VC 257 and VC 267. Now, in your book, you do briefly discuss section 38 revocations, and you use a example from a Westgate Tunnel, which was a relatively localised planning amendment. Would it be fair to say that the revocation before the Parliament today, to get rid of the activity centres and townhouse and low res code amendments, if that was to go through, would that be the single largest revocation of any planning amendment in the state's history?
Probably, yeah.
Yep. You're not aware of any other major things since the 1987?
No, and if you look at the first edition of my book, I was really struggling to find an example. A colleague dug one out that had happened years ago that I wasn't aware of, and that was mentioned in the footnotes of the first edition.
Yeah.
The Westgate Tunnel was a reasonably high profile one.
Dave, you're a nice example to use there, yeah.
That gave me an example for the second edition. It's not a mechanism that's been used much over the years. So I'm sure what you're saying would be correct.
So it'd be rather extraordinary in historical context. Thank you. And supposing that were to have got to go through now, the, for example, you're focusing on townhouses VC267 today. That was gazetted on the 6th of March. It was operational from the 31st of March, however, applications could be made from the point of the 6th of March. Is that correct, from the gazetteled date? Is that generally?
I'd have to refresh my memory on that because there's, I mean, I haven't had a need to look at the way the transitional provisions work. I remember that there are provisions about applications lodged before a certain date, keep going under the old controls. And I can't remember how it worked in that intermediate period, but yeah.
My understanding is applications can be made, but please do correct me.
Oh, I'm sure applications are being made. I'm just not 100% sure what the transitional provisions are. I haven't had a need to work through the mechanics of that.
If that's the case, thank you. But irrespective, we have had at least a couple of weeks, possibly longer, where applications could have been made. If an application has been made and this amendment gets revoked, what happens to that application?
Well, you know, the standard principle aside, unless, well, unless there are transitional provisions, but by nature a revocation doesn't have transitional provisions, you drop back to the old scheme. Any planning application is decided against the scheme as it exists on the day. So except where amendments have transitional provisions, it's always the case that a planning application in train is at risk of the planning scheme controls changing under it, yeah.
Of course. And obviously, and you explain how it operates as a check and balance. But also the flip side of that is it does create to, lead to uncertainty, doesn't it, for people who are applying under these new provisions?
Ah, yes.
Yep, thank you. Suppose the amendment, the motion were to be amended and rather than whole scale removal, it was just, we're going to pick a few lines out here and there. How would that operate? And how do you avoid unintended consequences, if you can at all, from doing that? From picking out, cherry picking parts that you don't like of a particular amendment and then just revoking those parts?
Yes, it's extremely tricky, you know. The analogy that occurs to me is, you know, you're trying to make alterations of plane while in flight. That's also sort of true of the controls themselves, of course. You're essentially making changes to a planning system that's currently in use. And so that's one of the dangers of a very dramatic set of controls, that a very dramatic set of changes that, as I've said, I'm concerned haven't been carefully tested. But yes, as soon as you then start, you'll then piling probably risk of unintended consequences that I think already exist under this amendment. And there are then potentially other risks of unintended consequences if you start changing it. So yeah, that's a fair observation, I think, yes.
Thank you. In your presentation, you touched briefly on, I think you suggested that under the previous arrangements, Victoria's community appeal rights were much more widespread than they are elsewhere. Is that a fair assessment to make?
Certainly historically, I would say that's the case. Victoria has had traditionally quite wide third party notice and review rights. It has been narrowing. And, you know, it's difficult to do a sort of a precise quantitative assessment of how they compare. But for example, in some other jurisdictions, you go to, I think it's the Land and Environment Court in New South Wales. And even though that's a bit more approachable than a regular court, my understanding, not having practised in New South Wales, my understanding is it's probably still a bit more intimidating than VCAT is, for example, for people to go to. Because it's also about, it's about the availability of rights. It's also a little bit about the way VCAT handle them. And VCAT do a pretty good job of making the system accessible. So there are a lot of components to that. But I think broadly, traditionally, we've had quite widespread community appeal rights. This would be a very big change to that. This would be one of, I mean, it's been, you know, 30 plus years where medium density housing proposals, the community have had the right to object and appeal. So to constrain those rights, this would be the most dramatic change I can remember in terms of the constraint to those rights.
The same timeframe you mentioned, we've had this discussion with the department earlier this morning as well. But your book also talks about the long running objective for, towards densification of existing built areas as opposed to continuing, continuing sprawl. And as a representative of those regions, that's something that I'm very excited about, to do that in a much more sustainable way. Can you talk to me a little bit about the context of those objectives? Particularly where it dovetails with the Plan Victoria's objectives of, I think, in previous plans for 70, that 70/30 split? Or the 50/50 as opposed to the 70/30 that we've seen?
I mean, I'm happy to, it's a little hard to know where to start. It's a very broad question. I mean, it's an absolutely laudable objective. I think it's a little bit, you know, we've lost the 20 minute neighbourhood language with Plan Melbourne going away, which is, I think, a little bit unfortunate. But it's certainly been the continuity of the basic concept of consolidating in established areas and consolidating near infrastructures. And so it's all really solid and remains a really important objective. I think the challenges that are related to res code, and this is where there absolutely is a need to reform res code. And I think there's an opportunity cost question here if we're pursuing the wrong type of reform. But one of the problems with res code is very rooted in the 90s. And so, you know, I mentioned villa units before and I think they're a great form of housing. But, you know, there's an argument in a lot of contexts that those will be under development. I think it would be great if we had a new code that was designed from the ground up to be better at assessing particularly three to four story forms. Because res code is not traditional res code, and I believe codified res code is not very good at assessing three to four story forms. So that's one of the key reforms I'd like to see in that space. I may have strayed a little bit from your question, you might want to remind me.
I'll just assess the historical move towards densification as an ideal outcome.
Well, it absolutely should be supported, yes.
And would I take that to say that you would be in support, in principle, of measures which provide more housing in activity centres in those dense areas around railway stations as opposed to let's have three more suburbs beyond Clyde North?
Yes, and I mean, one reason why I get a little bit frustrated by some of the debates in this space is I don't think, you know, if people are saying we need to get rid of community appeal rights, for example, to achieve this densification, I don't think we've explored that ground very well at all. I think there's much more scope to design better housing options that will allow good infill, that will get good canopy outcomes, for example, and get denser forms. But we haven't done the basic sort of design work. And I took that, that rule setting being the sort of the thing that we've neglected in Victorian planning. We haven't done the good code design that allowed us to get to those outcomes. And there is a lot of scope to be getting good medium density outcomes, increasing supply, three to four story buildings with good tree canopy. But I don't believe these changes are that reform.
Thank you, we'll leave that one there for the moment. Ms Cressy.
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Dr Rowley, for being before us, most interesting. Can I just go back to a couple of those issues that you've raised? You said you're very concerned about the changes and not being carefully tested, I think you said. And just to take up the point about revocation, that if it's not being done properly, there is a place for revocation nevertheless. Would you agree? You know, in terms of, we were discussing, you were discussing with Mr Galia about the extent of a potential revocation. But there is a place for revocation if things aren't done properly?
Yes, I mean, I think it's a legitimate part of the process. I think the philosophical case, I don't want to get too sort of highfalutin and academic here. But the philosophical case for revocation, I think, is that planning schemes are a form of legislation. You can be charged with breaching a planning scheme. So fundamentally, there needs to be a recourse to the legislative body rather than having the whole thing sit completely as subordinate legislation that can't be touched by the government of the day. So that's philosophically why I think the mechanism's there. So I don't philosophically have a problem. I accept that there are challenges and it's a drastic step to take. But I think it's a legitimate part of the system, yes.
Yeah, but given these changes and the extent of these changes, as you said, there's, I think you said, concerns around the community appeal rights and just the extent of that. And I really want to just explore that a little bit more about your comments on that. Because with many of these changes, I think the community and certainly councils were blindsided about the extent of the changes. And so just to go to your point about that community appeal rights that haven't been explored, why has that not been done? Why has the, as you said, the basic design or the code design? Why has that not been done? And why has the community appeal rights not been further explored through this process, do you think?
I think to a certain extent, that's for others to answer, you know, in terms of why they didn't do more consultations, for example. I will say, you know, the controls, a version of the controls were sent out to councils during the process. I know I've read some of those council submissions. Councils raised, I think, a lot of really valid concerns that I don't think were sufficiently addressed in the final controls. So, I mean, I didn't hear your sessions this morning, I didn't listen. But I imagine people from government would say, well, there was consultation, they were shown to councils. And that's true as far as it goes.
I read in a letter from a council just to actually say they were literally blindsided by this, so.
The final version of the controls wasn't seen before they went out, you know, before the sort of final announcements, for example. The thing that I'm also aware of in this space, in terms of just the community getting their head around it, is it's really complex. I literally sort of explain these things for a living. Like I do training, I've worked in planning education. The system is getting harder and harder to explain. I was doing res code training yesterday and it was really exhausting and really tiring and really hard to explain the provisions. And it is harder than it was 10 years ago because the provisions are getting more complex. So there is a sort of an understanding problem in terms of the community's understanding of these provisions. But having said that, again, they were consulted by some councils, I don't believe all, receiving copies of the provisions and being allowed to comment on them. But they weren't, you know, released for community comment, for example. As for example, the original res code was, the advisory committee report that I read a quote from earlier, that was a publicly released report based on a publicly released draft of res code. And there were multiple drafts to that. There are actually a couple of different advisory committee reports on res code, there were changes made, so yes.
But to go to your point about the complexity and you just highlighted that with what you do on a daily basis, as you know, as a living. So for the community to get their head around it and for council to be able to understand the complexity of the changes, do you think there needed to be more time from government to allow community to have a say in this large scale change?
Yes, and I think the other thing that's really important in that, in terms of the community getting their head around it, is the, I mean, I've talked about testing before, but to me, that's inextricably tied to visualisation. You know, the exercise of understanding what it looks like, understanding what it looks like in particular streetscapes. So being able to show the community drawings of what it looks like. To me, if the premise of the controls is we're going to give greater clarity and certainty about housing outcomes, we're going to give developers greater clarity and certainty, we're going to give the community greater clarity and certainty. And because you've got that clarity and certainty about housing outcomes, you no longer get appeal rights. Because we've been through a process, we've, you know, tested it, we've consulted, we've drawn the diagrams, we've shown people what they look like. And now we've resolved that as a policy question and you no longer get to test it application by application by application. If you went through that process and you visualised that way and you took the community on that journey that way, I think that would be far more valid to then remove those appeal rights than in a scenario where the community hasn't seen the controls, the controls are now in and we don't have visualisations beyond a few things like the landscaping one I highlighted before. We don't have visualisations of what they look like. We don't have the strategic justification that, you know, councils get pushed for strategic justification for all their amendments. So we don't have the underlying explanation of how they arrived at, how they were tested at. We don't have those visualisations, I think that's really concerning.
But that, none of that happened, what you just described?
Look, I wouldn't say none, none is an absolute. But certainly, certainly the public element of it was extremely limited. As I said, there wasn't sort of a general public consultation. In terms of the testing, you know, I haven't seen enough of the testing to be confident. You know, I'm still concerned, you know, I do wonder whether people, you know, as these things are approved and, you know, the minister signs off the amendment, how clear is the minister on what the outcomes look like? If there aren't these visualisations for the minister or the people originally, you know, this goes back to the housing statement. When it was originally suggested, when they put it in the housing statement that we wanted to codify res code, was there a clear enough understanding of what those outcomes looked like? If you used res code as the starting point for codification, rather than, for example, developing a new code from scratch?
So just on that visualisation, could you just explain to the committee what that entails?
Well, I have done my own unsophisticated version of it, which is the diagram you saw before. It's essentially that sort of exercise. You could do a more sophisticated version, you could say what, you could actually design buildings within those and show what they look like.
But is that, so Mike, the reason I ask that is that would that be normal process for the minister to have that information presented to them when they're making these very extensive and huge decisions?
We don't, as members of the public, get a very good line of sight on what information is put before the minister. You know, ministerial briefs are not sort of routinely in the public realm. So.
They've asked for them on this occasion.
So, but the other thing I'd say is traditionally in Victoria, we haven't been as good as we, I think, should have been at doing form based codes. So this idea of presenting sort of diagrams that show form as the starting point, we probably have never done very well in Victoria across the board. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, but I wouldn't say it's normal for the minister to have diagrams of what the buildings are going to look like in front of them when they make a decision on amendment.
The minister and the community.
It would be helpful, yes, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr Manfield.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for appearing today. We did hear earlier from the department that the consultation with local government and planning departments had been extensive at every stage of the process. And what we've also, I think I've certainly heard and I think other members have heard is that, so at least with respect to the extent of the exemptions, this did come as a bit of a surprise to some councils. But we can ask the councils about that further. But I did want to focus a bit on the exemptions under VC267. There are exemptions, for example, to considering local policies like ASD or greening requirements. The department said that any gaps between the standards in the code and the standards in local policies can be looked at, but should be picked up by the building code. Would you agree with that?
No, so the ASD point's a really good one. The councils have been on a, it must be 20 years, I'm careful. Of course it's about putting an exact date on it, I don't want to mislead the committee. You know, you can check what the timeline is. But councils have long pushed for greater standards in the planning scheme. There was, again, approximately 20, maybe 15 years ago, there was certainly a pushback. And there was, there's a VCAT decision, I'm pretty sure it's called Hassan v Moreland, where the tribunal said, ah, sustainability controls are probably a matter for the building system. And the idea is that building is more consistent applies to everything, it's border based. And in my view, the debate in the planning profession has gone through a long journey of saying, no, no. You need these things to be in planning schemes as well because it's at the planning scheme phase that you're sorting out the envelope of buildings and you can get passive design and you can sort those things out in the system. And that needs to be in the mix at the stage where you're also working out, you know, impacts on neighbours and all those sort of things. And I felt that that argument had been won in the profession. And there was an acceptance that it needs to be adequately represented in the planning system. And we've been waiting for statewide controls to catch up frankly with where local policy had pushed. So I think if we get to a scenario where we're now saying, oh, no, 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 we'll put that back to the building system and we'll turn off council controls and we'll rely on fairly limited ASD provisions that are in these provisions, I think that'll be a step backwards.
Thank you. They, I also raised with them that, you know, in the exemptions, there's no longer a requirement under these res code changes to consider an adopted, but not yet, gazetted, planning scheme amendment or overlay. They said in the case, like we talked about the example of a flood overlay, they said that wouldn't be a problem because that'd be picked up by overlays in the building framework. We didn't really get to talk about other examples. But I guess in your view, is the exemption to consider adopted planning? We didn't really get to talk about other examples, but I guess in your view, is the exemption to consider adopted planning scheme amendments or overlays appropriate? And, um, could there be any unintended consequences from this?
I mean, I think there's risk of unintended consequences, yes. The, I think we're talking about, yeah, the, 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 beyond this amendment, I'm concerned there is this general, uh, push to A, um, turn off that broader discretion, which in my import, my view is an important safety mechanism to catch unexpected things that arise. There's also a whole other thing about sort of a, a strain of case law that's very restrictive in terms of the discretion people have even under the existing controls. But things like the idea that our flood mapping in the building system is sufficient and reliable and clear enough that we can rely on it being correct and that we shouldn't have a general discretion to consider a flood issue that's apparent, but not correctly addressed in the planning scheme or the building system, I think is, is really concerning. The current context where we know, you know, climate change, these things are getting, you know, more intense, all of our flood mapping work is under pressure, there's all sorts of scouring it, you know, with the, the various authorities to get that material up to date, that kind of thing, yeah, I think it is really concerning.
Yeah, and I guess just on the cumulative, potential cumulative impact of all these exemptions, do you have any comment on, on what that might look like?
Um, well, it's, it's clearly done so that, um, councils can't apply, you know, sort of a general sort of, uh, discretion to consider some aspect of the merits, you know, whether reasonably or unreasonably that lives outside of the standards. And in my view, it is a good feature of the system that it provides that general ability to catch something unexpected that arises. And I think there is a much larger discussion about the breakdown of trust between the state government and local government. And what you're basically seeing is a lack of trust in local government to assert reasonable planning powers responsibly. And I think that's, that's really unfortunate, there's a, we could have a very long discussion.
We had another inquiry into that.
Local government relationship, yeah.
No, thank you. Um, and I read with interest your blog about the tree canopy, um, coverage, coverage changes, uh, under the new ResCode. You made reference to the, the lack of, I guess, benchmarking or, um, baseline data in order to be able to assess what these changes, you know, what impact these changes will have. Can you expand on that a bit?
Well, what I just mean, we've got a 30% canopy coverage in, um, Plan Victoria. Now, that's, that's across the whole metropolitan area, so that's not on private land. And clearly a lot of canopy is going to be achieved on, you know, street trees and in parks and all sorts of different places, right? So, but it would be great to understand, well, yeah, okay, we think to achieve, you know, there's not even an explicit link to the ResCode things where it just says, yeah, we believe it should be 10% on private land. And, you know, you could then break that down, well, what do you need to achieve on redeveloped land to achieve 10% across private land generally? So there's all those sorts of problems, even just, it's not clear enough to me whether when they had that targeting Plan Victoria, they thought you needed to increase or decrease the amount of tree canopy currently achieved. I'm extremely confident as a long-time practitioner using the current controls that the amount of canopy achieved will be less under these controls. So if the assumption was you needed to increase canopy achieved on private land to achieve the Plan Victoria goals, then this is going away from that. And again, we don't have testing to see the case against that proposition, so you are just trusting, that's my very strong, uh, I suppose you'd say intuition or judgment based on many years of doing ResCode assessments. But I'm absolutely convinced we'll get worse tree canopy and particularly worse landscaping results.
Yes.
Under these controls than under the former controls.
Yes, and, um, I did ask you about that this morning with the department. Um, and they indicated that the, that there were adequate provisions under the new ResCode around vegetation retention, a landscaping plan, soil quality, a bunch of different things that they felt actually maintained good protections of, of that, so.
I've heard that this has been said in various sort of information sessions about the canopy and I couldn't, about the tree canopy standard and I couldn't disagree more vehemently. They have literally removed an objective that required, that encouraged retention of existing trees. They have removed the entire landscaping standard in terms of general landscaping unrelated to the tree canopy question. They've removed all that. There seems to be an argument that, oh, well, you can require a landscape plan to your satisfaction and therefore you can require landscaping. But council has to make that decision as to whether the landscaping plan is to its satisfaction against the valid considerations under the scheme. And they cannot be considering a landscaping standard because they've turned off all these general discretions, as you've alluded to, they cannot be considering a landscaping standard, for example, that has now been removed from the scheme. The old landscaping standard, if you had a good, really good tree on the land, there was an obligation to essentially consider that tree and design in a site-responsive way to retain it if you could. And, you know, there was then an argument about whether it was a significant enough tree to warrant that, that's all gone. And we can, we can talk about, oh, councils could do this or couldn't do this. The fact is, those aspects of the controls have been removed. And the new controls, in my view, actively incentivize removal of existing trees.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bachelor?
Thanks Chair, Dr. Rowley, thanks so much for the thoughtful and detailed evidence you've given us today, it's very appreciated. You started your presentation, you racked up your visualization, which, that verbally you described as unsophisticated. Did that diagram take into account sort of other things other than the built for, uh, sort of mass? Did it look at things like how overshadowing rules, overlooking rules, internal structures, ventilation? Those sorts of things would impact on what built form would look like in how you constructed that diagram? Or was it just a kind of first iteration of those?
So only limited way, that's certainly true. But what I would say is, so what it, what I did was I looked at the setbacks, I looked at the site coverage and I essentially worked out how deep the building would be and I did a little spreadsheet and, and you actually, as I explain in, there's a blog post that explains those diagrams a little bit. The garden area becomes the main constraint on that envelope. Within that envelope, it is true that, yeah, there then might be aspects of, um, various aspects of design that might then affect the buildings. That said, um, I've done a lot of ResCode assessments, I particularly, I did, used to do a lot of work for Brimbank out west, they've got a whole lot of residential growth zone areas. Residential growth zone was sort of a testbed for what codified ResCode looked like. And they used to get a lot of building forms that weren't unlike that basic, that, I mean, they always looked different because they had roofs and they had windows and they had decks and stuff. The other thing I would say is, so that is a north-south, um, the, the diagram I did is for a north-south block. And it would look different on east-west because you have to set further off the south boundary. But it goes to your question of overshadowing, because generally if you've got, particularly if you've got traditional single houses.
Yep.
You'll rarely fail on overshadowing. And that's just because the overshadowing standard is, is very dependent on the size of the adjoining open space next door. So for example, I don't think overshadowing would be a limit on those envelopes. Overlooking, uh, you can either screen the balconies, screen the bedrooms, although perhaps one positive change is you no longer have to screen the bedroom, so you might just get the overlooking. So I wouldn't expect overlooking, for example, to be a significant strain on that envelope. But yes, it is clearly an unsophisticated exercise and I would absolutely be interested to see whether there was a more sophisticated design testing done.
Um, you also talked about, a little bit about complexity in the system up to this point. And I just want to make sure I'm clear on your evidence that you was, even prior to these changes, the system was getting increasingly complex. Is that what you would?
Yes.
Is that your evidence? What do you think the driver of that has been?
There is, um, a tendency, do you mean in ResCode generally or across the board or?
Well, it's.
You're happy for me to answer either way?
Oh, I think you're trying to give us most evidence about ResCode, so why don't we try and focus on, on that?
Well, one of the things that has happened with ResCode is a reliance on zone schedules to codify changes to it, rather than, for example, the use of local policy. That has, in my view, been a mistake because one of the things that we could have done with local policy is encourage councils to draw diagrams. And you could put diagrams in local policy that, hey, this is the kind of forms we want and give that sort of clarity. And by asking people to put it in schedules, what you do is you almost sort of dismember the controls because you're saying, here's a number about overshadowing and here's a number about setbacks and here's a number about open space. And you're reducing the guidance you give to a series of separate constrained numbers rather than showing how it comes together into a housing product. So in the ResCode space, I think that has been a, a real concern. The other thing that, that is more broadly a problem across the system is the lack of trust in local councils that has led to a micromanagement of the way they manage things. So for example, you don't trust councils to do simple applications quickly, you set up streams with complex rules to qualify, and so this is relevant to ResCode in the, under clause 54, the single dwelling controls, that's now partially, VicSmart, you know, which is the fast track code. And so you spend a lot more time at council than, you know, carefully working out which stream something is in or arguing with applicants about which stream something is in, rather than just going, okay, this is a shed, let's just approve it. You know, the, the ability to cut to the chase, um, is reduced when you micromanage process in that way.
Do you think that's because we've had consistent examples from councils where planning applications that would otherwise meet sort of strategic goals such as, you know, putting 84 townhouses on an old school site, getting rejected against the advice of planning officers because they have a flat V pitched roof? Like, we, we're kind of in this point where we've, some of the lack of trust has been a little bit warranted, hasn't it? Given the planning decisions that some local councils have been taking?
There is of course, poor decision-making at councils. So, the, the issue is, sometimes, um, the issue is, how do you respond to that? And, and like, it gets to be a really complex discussion. One of the things I would say though is, um, this goes to my question about the focus that we should have had for the last 20, 30 years is about how guidance and policies expressed in scheme, because you, you, the, the scenario you just put to me was a redevelopment of a school site that clearly accords with the objectives of planning, right? And the problem in our system is no two people ever have the same answer as to whether something clearly accords with the objectives of our system. So, in principle, the idea of codifying what the right balance of densification and character looks like is exactly the road we should be going down. And that is how you resolve that, by focusing on the decision-making guidance and the decision-making rules. You can remove that ambiguity where councils take that this should be a refusal and perhaps your take that it should be an approval are equally valid and have to be sorted out at VCAT, if you can codify the guidance better. So this is, if we look right back to the first things I said, a codified set of controls is absolutely worthwhile goal to pursue because it achieves that. But codifying based on a sort of 90s originating, early 2000s medium-density villi unit control and working backwards to generate your code was absolutely not the right way to do that.
Last point I want to talk, touch on, you'd mentioned that there, you know, clearly I think you were saying we should do more to promote the sort of three to four-storey building kind of development in. Where is my big question? Like, where are the right kind of places to be supporting three to four-story buildings in our city?
I'm conscious of the time, so I'll give you two sort of very glib answers. One is in well-located locations, but the other is sort of everywhere. There, there is scope for medium-density product that if the market will support it, you could just have everywhere. And the code, the kind of code I visualize for three to four stories, and I do look at the old sort of six-packs a lot, and there is a model that takes the best of those elements. And what you are doing is you are probably shrinking down the site coverage compared to what you get under ResCode. ResCode buildings cover the site a lot, you have a smaller form, a higher form. You encourage people to have more smaller units, so we have more lower-cost units and you get better tree canopy outcomes. And a code that looked like that, you probably could, could apply everywhere because the outcomes would be much better. But you need to design it carefully.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you Chair, thank you, uh, Dr. Rowley. Now, the minister, and I'm going to ask you to comment on, on a position the minister has taken. She set up her own standing advisory committee, but it appears a particular important recommendation has been totally rejected and the relevant extract, uh, has been relabeled, uh, from the, from, uh, a, was a walkable catchment zone to a housing choice and transport zone. And the, what she recommended was this, that if the walkable catchment zone is applied, do not apply it to areas where A, the heritage overlay or the neighbourhood character overlay applies and B, other planning controls or constraints on development apply such that the scale of development envisaged under the walkable catchment zone would not be appropriate. Why would the minister reject her own standing advisory committee's key recommendation?
Oh, I, I don't think I want to be.
Maybe not why, but would you like to comment on, uh, that, that, uh, recommendation by the committee? Is it important?
I'll apologize in advance because I'm going to give you a very qualified and careful answer. As I said, I haven't been following that side of things that closely, I haven't read that advisory committee recommendations. I want to be really careful about commenting on that. I think the, the basic idea that, um, you should be careful about applying a high-growth zone. I think, I think what that was talking about was applying a high-growth zone on a location where you can't really achieve that growth or it's going to be odd, um, if you've got a heritage overlay. I mean, the, the, the housing choice and transport zone is talking about, you know, three to six stories, I think, from memory. So, you can imagine if you've got one and two-story buildings in a heritage precinct covered by heritage overlay and one of them gets demolished, it becomes a, an odd outcome potentially to have that building pop up in that street. So that, I imagine, is the kind of thingy, but I probably don't want to go further than that because I haven't looked closely at the recommendation. Certainly not going to speculate on the, the rationale the minister had in.
And I guess the, the, the.
Change or not making a change.
Comment would be, why set up a standing advisory committee and reject the recommendations? Perhaps, uh, yes, perhaps, Dr. Rowley, um, you might like to comment on the fact that clearly, uh, the cost of development now is intense because of the, uh, taxes, charges, regulations and requirements that the government place on developers, hence the fact that we, we do have enormous number, thousands of developments that have been approved or houses that have been potentially into the market but won't be built because there is no market for them, essentially. So, but if we go down that path, uh, of, um, development, what, i- is it going to be the case, do you think, so that they can get something to market? That they'll, that developers would build the cheapest possible building and if standard B31 clause 55 on design detail is removed, how can councils and communities object to a cookie cutter and prefabricated cement box type, uh, dwelling that we might have seen in eastern block countries?
So I want to step through that carefully. There's a, there's a little bit in there. So, uh, the, the, the start of that question is talking about a debate which is really important, but I'm not the best person to answer. There's a longstanding debate about the extent to which housing supply is going to be realized or constrained by planning controls and if you just up the amount of things that can be approved. So there's a whole other argument that I think there's others that should talk to. In terms of the minimum compliance, um, clearly the market will push a lot of developers to provide really good product because it might sell better, right? So, so it's not as if every building looks awful in this world. But it is the nature of the control that they need to be tested against the worst outcomes that can happen under the control and that needs to be understood because by definition and deemed to comply control, you are saying those results are okay. So, I mean, for example, my reading of the way the street integration standard works. So one of the things that ResCode did was it stopped older blocks of flats that just faced sideways. And if you look at older blocks of flats, you used to see blocks of flats that had a straight brick wall. That was very hard to do a quantitative version, a codified version of. That was very hard to do a quantitative version, a codified version of, but they've had a go. But it only requires a direct line of sight from a window. And in my reading, it doesn't require it to be in the front elevation. So there is now no requirement to stop people. Going back to that older form that you did use to see, and I've got photos on my website of it, of just a vertical, straight brick wall. And we need to be willing to accept these poor outcomes in the nature of a dea-, that, that is what a deemed-to-comply control is. Uh, you should, I think you should be careful about being too cynical about developers always going
Hmm.
for the worst outcome.
Hmm.
They won't. They'll some, they'll produce a lot of lovely buildings.
The moment they're producing fabulous outcomes, but nobody can afford to buy them.
They'll potentially produce a lot of lovely buildings, but you also do need to understand that the nature of a deemed-to-comply control is you are saying that the worst outcomes under that control are okay. That is literally what a deemed-to-comply control does. And you have to be willing to accept those poor outcomes.
Uh, so just going to that, we know that, uh, in Camberwell, for example, a townhouse will have a, you know, one to three million price, price tag. So would that be affordable housing for young people, which is part of the, uh, desire of this tall towers operation?
Uh, well, uh, uh, the wealthy, I, I grew up in Campbell, so I'm not taking a, a, a pot shot at the people of-
We won't hold that against you.
I'm not taking a pot shot at the people of Campbell, perhaps the wealthy young people of Campbell can. I mean, look, the argument, the argument, to be fair, clearly that development is not necessarily an affordable development for the average young person. There is always an argument that the housing supply trickles down through the, through the, um, housing supply ladder. I'm not the best person to speak frankly to the, the housing economics of, of how that all plays out.
Can you comment on the, uh, extra infrastructure costs that are going to be applied to local government, therefore ratepayers, as a result of these tall towers projects?
I think the short answer is probably no. Um, clearly, we need to, as we're increasing housing density, we need to be providing infrastructure for it. Um, that isn't in itself a reason to be, um, preventing good housing densification outcomes. But it is clearly something the government needs to be doing alongside getting the housing settings right.
Do you know of any work that's been done to quantify the costs that are going to be involved in, say, changing all the drainage systems, the sewage systems? Uh, the, the, the lack, the parking space, which is obviously going to be non-existent in some areas, let alone schools that are needed and, you know, other infrastructure?
So, I am, I am aware through the industry that there is, um, some work being done about, you know, new development contribution models and the like. But I don't really have any line of sight on exactly what's happening.
Yeah, well, we're aware that, uh, developers at the moment are, have fifteen taxes applied to them. Uh, but that's not going to cover this infrastructure that is required. So ratepayers are going to be forced to pick up the bill. But you're, you've not seen any work that's quantified that, that total cost.
Uh, that's not something I've got a-
A handle on?
Yeah, no.
Okay, I think my time's up.
Might leave it there. Thank you, Mrs. MacArthur. Oh, we've got our ping back. That's nice. Um, that's, that is what-
Dr. Rowley, thank you so much for presenting to us today and also for your presentation earlier. I must confess, it was quite small on the screen and I wasn't able to follow most of it. So I did want to ask if that is being made available, perhaps the Chair might know or someone might know.
I mean, I provided through the secretariat, so I assume it's-
Matt's super late, isn't he?
Yeah, great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Apologize for that. Limited to three slides, I was shrinking things down.
Well, my eyesight is challenged. Uh, I wanted to, um, perhaps go to the point raised, uh, by Mrs. MacArthur about the, the cost of infrastructure investment. Uh, because one of the concerns that I've, uh, particularly, um, hearing from, uh, the communities in the northern metropolitan, way up north around Beveridge and others is the incredible cost of the infrastructure, um, investments required. Do you have any sense on sort of overall cost and how that's driving up housing prices between, uh, established suburbs versus growth suburbs on the infrastructure changes required for the, um, uplifting capacity of housing?
So, so the short-
Is there any evidence or anything?
The short answer is, um, the short answer is no, I'm not really an expert in that, that space. It, it's probably sort of an answer to the question I was asked a moment ago though, too, is that one of the reasons why I don't think you should be constraining, you need to be doing that infrastructure work and it, it is potentially a valid critique that the infrastructure work hasn't kept up with the extremely strong push for more housing.
Yeah.
Um, but as a general statement, all other things being equal.
Yeah.
It is going to be usually more expensive to provide infrastructure in a new sort of greenfields area where there's nothing compared to leveraging off existing infrastructure and also more sprawling areas have greater infrastructure costs than more compact areas. So, you know, in a very general way, I'd say you'd expect that, again, all other things being equal, consolidation and denser development is going to decrease your infrastructure costs. So that's why I looped back to saying you don't necessarily want to be constraining good housing outcomes because you haven't got the infrastructure right yet. That, that I think is probably putting the cart before the horse. But in terms of the more specific question you're ans- asking, I don't think I can answer that, no.
No, I know. Look, I appreciate that. And one of the, um, you, you mentioned it earlier and I can't recall who it was, haha, whose question you're responding to was about the changes to twenty-minute neighbourhoods because that's something that we've heard a lot from, uh, growth area communities is access to essentially twenty-minute neighbourhoods. And, uh, you mentioned something about it being dismantled, shifted, changed under Plan Melbourne. Could you, uh, talk to me a little bit about that? Because I do have some questions about twenty-minute neighbourhoods and, um, essentially infill densification.
All I was referring to there was that Plan Victoria, so, so Plan Melbourne, the twenty-minute neighbourhood was sort of the central structuring idea of that document. And it goes right back, in fact, to the initial draft, which was under a coalition government. And one of the positive things, I think, was that a version of Plan Melbourne persisted from one government to another, which doesn't normally happen, which is great.
That's true.
And so we've had for a decade, this sort of twenty-minute neighbourhood concept as a key idea.
Mm-hmm.
And it's not in Plan Victoria. And I think that's a bit of a loss. So, that was all I was referring to there. Again, I wouldn't want to overstate that because, you know, the general principles of, we could get into a whole critique about Plan Victoria and what some of the gaps might be. But the, the general principles, I think it would be fair to argue, are sort of still in there in terms of access to services, consolidating and, and the like. But certainly the words twenty-minute neighbourhood are gone.
Wasn't there some sort of underlying, uh, thoughts and around twenty-minute neighbourhoods and what that means for, you know, quality of life and access to services, medical care, schools and other things? That meant that it had such prominence in former documents? So I'm just trying to understand, what was it meant to achieve? Twenty-minute neighbourhoods, why was it, why is it being elevated as such a good thing? I mean, I'm keen to understand it as a kind of concept and one that we should be, is it something we should be considering? Particularly with respect to-
The, the reason I liked it as a concept for planning strategy was, as I said, these concepts have been embedded in planning strategies.
Hmm.
Varying degrees of effectiveness, but as long as I can remember.
Yeah.
But it's a good piece of communication, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Notwithstanding the fact that some conspiracy theorists and stuff got hold of this concept around the world and, and seemed to get all head up about it. But-
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I think it's a good piece of communication and it's an idea that people can relate to. Just the idea that you've got your local needs in your local area and, um, you can visualize that. You can think about what a neighbourhood that looks like, that looks like. So I, I think it, I just think the language is a bit of a, I mean, this is well away from what I came here to talk about. But I think the loss of that, uh, language is just a little bit of a shame because it's a, a good way to communicate a, a planning concept as to what a good community is.
Yeah, it's about creating good community. And I, I mean, I'm sort of then reflecting on those communities that have good access to shops, jobs, transport, walkability, public and active transport and others and what it is that we're trying to do with, um, with the housing statement and particularly around the next decade ahead. Uh, I'm looking to particularly the questions on the environment. I'm just going to go to the question that I asked earlier, which was around standards and standard changes around sustainability and climate, uh, climate and also solar. Do you have any kind of comments on the changes that are being proposed? And access and improved uptake of solar and what that will mean for the building codes? And what we could be considering when it comes to greater uptake of solar? And what, you know, apartments and higher density might, what, what is that there?
I must admit, I, I hadn't looked especially closely at the, um, at, at that aspect of the controls.
Hmm.
So I probably don't have a very, are you talking about the maintenance of solar energy generation areas on rooftops, for example, in the res code?
Changes with the res code around that.
It's a good thing to reflect in the controls. So, you know, I mean, that's a-
That's been picked up.
It's a positive addition. I mean, it has to be measured in the context of you'd want to compare, well, I, 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 I think you have to
Hmm.
think about the fact that there are also potentially these disruptions of existing council ESD policies that are being turned off. And so that's a potential dis-benefit in the same space to think about. But just taking it in isolation, again, have not looked closely at it. Not an expert in the area, so in terms of is it a sufficient measure or, you know, I've not been down that rabbit hole. But in principle, the idea that there is a measure that encourages planners to think about that is, is positive.
And that that would in fact be a part of the new, um, townhouse code to include access to greater uptake of solar by making place on rooftop and the alignment of the building and consideration to it, but I won't go into that, but perhaps I'll-
It's a positive that it's there.
It's a positive thing. Um, one of, we've talked about the, how quickly we can now unlock housing potentially uh, with the, uh, townhouse code. If it is that, um, these amendments are expected to lever over long-term lots more, um, homes for Victorians and that there is a housing supply, I just wanted to know what your thoughts would be about the impact of housing supply on the, um, if this was in fact revoked, if you-
Um, it's, it's hard to predict. I am not completely convinced that, um, it will unleash an enormous amount of additional supply, partly because I don't think you'll get necessarily the efficiencies that we thought. Um, so, you know, that's a concern. I think the other concern, which I haven't really spoken about, so I know I'm sort of mentioning it to death, but-
Yeah.
Um, the, there is a real concern about opportunity cost here in terms of when you do a reform like this, it, it takes a long time to play out. There's sort of stumbling around, trying to fix up mistakes in it, governments sort of fall in behind it for a few years. And it'll be several years before we get another chance at review of these provisions. So, uh, that's why I say, I think, when you're thinking about housing capacity outcomes, it's important to not just consider codified res code versus status quo.
Yeah.
It's important to consider codified res code versus a better code that was more effective that we're now not going to be doing because we're lining up behind what I think is a full share. We've, this, this has been coming for a long time. There was a discussion paper in, I think, twenty-twenty-one about this and you could see codification of res code coming five years away. And it is something that I believe we've already lost five years to, this pursuit of what I think is an ill-advised idea. And if we just keep rolling with it, we'll lose another four or five years before we get around to really having a go at going, ah, yeah, codified res code didn't really do it. We need to design a better code for three and four-story buildings, for example, that will unlock both better outcomes, but also, I believe, you could get better supply outcomes.
Yeah, supply outcomes. All right, thank you.
We've got a couple of minutes left. Um, I'm going to have the first shot and then-
Here you go.
I'm putting on your, your, your father of the planning scheme in, or planning system in Victoria, I think it was described to me. Um, we've got, uh, with your Soviet Union-
I'll reject that characterization, but-
Um, I guess we've got a, a number of scenarios that people have alluded to. One is the possibility of a mass disallowance motion, sort of the nuclear option. There's a perhaps not very satisfactory selective disallowance option. There's a retention of the status quo option in terms of the new status quo. Um, in an ideal world, um, what would be your path forward recognizing the, some of the issues that we've discussed today?
I don't envy you your position in that revocation is a really unsatisfactory outcome. What I would say though is that, um, this is something I've been trying to dissuade government and people in the department from doing, as I said, for five years. When the paper came out in twenty-twenty-one, I think it was, I wrote a really long critique of that. This is an idea that just has taken hold as, I think, an easy way to do a residential reform and it has been a misdirection of resources. We should have been doing a better-designed, medium-density code that better achieved housing supply outcomes, better achieved tree canopy outcomes, better protected neighbourhood rights. And I don't think we needed to throw community objection, sorry, appeal rights, um, away as part of that. So, the, the one thing that, that I do think, and whether it's in the form of a revocation motion or just a shock to the system, I just really hope the government can be persuaded to reconsider this particular model of what a codified residential development code looks like. And I don't know, I, I mean, I haven't been able to persuade them. I don't know whether revocation will, I don't know whether something short of revocation will. But this is a misdirection of our effort. We are going to continue spilling, spinning our wheels on misdirected planning reform if we keep trying to pursue this particular design option. It is, um, it has been profoundly frustrating for five years to watch this particular car crash coming. And the, the car has now crashed. And I don't know how we get out of it because there is so much investment in this model as being, this is how we're going to fix the residential development code.
And, and it-
And because we've devoted all those resources to this particular model, there isn't unfortunately an alternative proposal on the table. And that's, in my view, incredibly disappointing. But we're not going to get a better proposal on the table while we keep pursuing this option.
I think we're going to leave it there. I'm sorry, Mr. Davis. But, um, can I firstly just thank you very much for your contribution today, Dr. Rowley? It's been fascinating. Um, I just note that, uh, you'll receive a copy of the, um, the transcript to review in about a week before it's published on the website. Um, and, uh, we will now take a break, uh, for ten minutes. Uh, and then we'll be back. So, um, with that, thank you, broadcast.